Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the Hampton School Board meeting to order. Ms. Bowers, please call the roll.
Ms. Cherry?
Present.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Ms. Mugler?
Here.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present. At this time, I would like to wish our viewing audience and members in the...in attendance, Happy New Year. And at this time, I would turn it over to Ms. Michaela for the invocation.
So, tonight, we have Carter Hefner, who's a 5th grader from Tucker Capps Elementary, and he's going to be starting us off with the pledge and then the invocation. So, whenever you're ready, Carter.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Good evening. My name is Carter Hefner, and I am in 5th...I am a 5th grader at Tucker Capps Elementary School. Tonight, I would like to share a short poem with you entitled "Your Best," "Your Best" by Barbara Vance. If you always try your best, then you'll never have to wonder about what you could have done if you summoned all your thunder. And if your best was not as good as you hoped it would be, you still could say, "I gave today all that I had in me."
Thank you so much, Carter. That was awesome. So, um, so you're a 5th grader, so that means you're going to be going to middle school next year?
Yes.
Are you excited for that?
Yes.
Awesome. And how's your year going by...going so far? We're like halfway through.
It's going good.
Yeah? And, um, do you have a subject that is like your favorite, or do you have anything that you like in particular?
Reading.
Oh, cool. Yeah, I like that, too. Thank you so much. And, um, uh, you have some people here with you tonight, so, um, do you want to introduce them so they can stand and be recognized?
And Ms. Suggs.
That's awesome. Thank you so much.
Good job, Carter. Any board members who would like to address Mr. Carter? Alrighty, at this time, we move on to item number two, recognition. And we will have Ms. Mugler to assist Diane Gallardo with our recognition.
Tonight is Tucker Capps night because we also have some students that we are going to recognize from Tucker Capps. Nadia Omar, who is a 4th grader, and Logan Costal, who is a 5th grader, both from Tucker Capps, won first place in the Virginia Council of Economic Education Color the Concepts Contest for the 15-16 school year. Only eight students from the entire Commonwealth were selected as first-place winners, and we are so proud to announce that two of the eight came from Tucker Capps Elementary The contest required students to design a poster that demonstrated an economic concept, which is included in the Virginia SOLs. So each recipient was awarded $100 to a Virginia 529 Plan Invest account. Winning artwork is posted on the Virginia Council for Economic Education's website and is also included on a set of posters with classroom resources provided on the back. Nadia and Logan, will you come forward so we can recognize your work? Nadia, we have this certificate of achievement for you to recognize you for your work, your first place, Virginia Council of Economic Education Color the Concepts Contest for 2015-16 school year, and it is signed by our...our school board chairman and our superintendent. Congratulations to you, Nadia. Let's give them another round of applause. Blings, can you all stand so we can recognize you, please? Also very pleased this evening to recognize five teachers who have renewed their National Board Certification. National Board Certification is the most respected professional certification available in education and provides numerous benefits to teachers, students, and schools. It was designed to develop, retain, and recognize accomplished teachers and to generate ongoing improvement in schools nationwide. While teacher licensure systems set the basic requirements to teach in each state, completion of the National Board Certification signifies that teachers have voluntarily gone much further. NBCTs have developed and demonstrated the advanced knowledge, skills, and practices required of an outstanding educator. Standards for each content area and developmental level are created by teachers for teachers, and they represent a consensus among educators about what accomplished, effective teachers should know and be able to do to improve student learning and achievement. Board Certification is available in 25 certificate areas from pre-kindergarten through 12th grade. The teachers being recognized this evening for renewing this certification include, first up, Michelle Bowers, Armstrong School for the Arts. Congratulations, Michelle Bowers, of Armstrong School for the Arts, for her renewal of her National Board Certification. Hi. Congratulations from the Hampton School Board on your renewal of your National Board Certification. Sally Lewis, Kickitane High School. And congratulations on your renewal.
Thank you, Ms. Mugler.
Might you be Christine Woods? Christine Woods, Kickitane High School. And if you have any family members or fellow teachers, administrators with you, if you all would please stand. And Kim Richardson is here as well, who helps coordinate the program.
I would like to also congratulate the teachers and their students for their recognition, for being recognized, and for the outstanding work that they're doing in Hampton School Division. Next on the agenda is item three, which is the consent agenda, which includes item 3.01, personal report number 17-01. Item point...item 3.02, minutes of the school board meeting of December the 7th, 2016. Item 3.03, minutes of the school board meeting of December the 21st, 2016. Item 3.04, certification of the closed session on December the 7th, 2016. And item 3.05, release from compulsory attendance religious exemption. Is there a motion?
Move approval of tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Mugler and seconded by Ms. Ann Cherry. Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye. Motion carries. Next on the...next on our agenda is item four, superintendent and staff reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
At this time, I would ask that Dr. Cagiano would come forward, and I know members of the curriculum instruction and assessment team will share in the first presentation as we focus on student achievement success indicators, grades K through 8, and in particular, they will really share information regarding the portrait of students along that continuum in terms of what we expect students to know, understand, and to be able to do here in Hampton City Schools. And so, Dr. Cagiano, at this particular time, will give context for...for the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Samuels, Ms. Cherry, members of the board, Dr. Smith. The purpose of this presentation this evening is to provide the board with an update regarding some of the work that's taken place around the development of student success indicators. If you all recall last year when Dr. Smith embarked upon his Look, Listen, and Learn Tour, and he came back to the board with a report, one of the things he shared, a finding for him, an area for growth for us, and a focus area, one of the superintendent's eight focus areas, is ensuring a guaranteed and viable curriculum. And this summer, August 2016, we, our department, the Curriculum Instruction Assessment Department, presented an operational definition of a guaranteed viable curriculum to staff. And I wanted to share, and you all have seen this as well, but I wanted to just call up a couple of key components of that. One indicates schools are responsible for making a guarantee that students are exposed to the essential learning outcomes. And a second component places emphasis on the importance of all teachers having a shared understanding of these essential learning outcomes. Now, if you recall, the standards movement's been around for quite some time. If we think back to mid-to-early 90s, and in Virginia, every seven years, the standards are reviewed and sometimes revised, and it seems that those documents have grown over time. And so, you know, a conversation we've had of late, and when you look at the portrait of a graduate, if you think of the thousands of skills, discrete skills, that kids come across in a pre-K through 12 experience, that not everything is in that portrait. And so, the conversation as of late has been, really, what is essential? What are essential learning outcomes? What must kids have in order to be set up for success at the next grade level? So, at the request of Dr. Smith, the Curriculum Instruction Department, we're starting this evening on English and mathematics, pre-K through 8, and looking at these essential learning outcomes, which we're referring to as student success indicators. And we've done some work around guaranteed and viable. This right here, we've presented to the board already what you see in green and red, but this is our instructional framework in Hampton City Schools that we'll be rolling out formally at the beginning of next year. We've already kind of whet the appetite with staff, and they've been exposed to the first two, and just recently via email, the last part there. But this, again, is in support of a guaranteed and viable curriculum. So, the new piece here in orange, we've also been charged by Dr. Smith in saying, what are some evidence-based strategies that we can embed into the curriculum and train staff? And so, when you think about these success indicators that we'll share tonight, and that you have in your booklet there in appendix D, what we're saying is there will be accompanying activities, for example, in the curriculum for summarizing and note-taking, non-linguistic representations, and questioning to support and enhance teaching and learning for these specific student success indicators. So, I just wanted to say that that framework is a continued work in progress, and we're pleased with where we are at this point. Also, last year, we were charged by Dr. Smith with really embarking on somewhat of an informal curriculum audit. And another one of his focus areas, as you know, is a systems approach. And so, it was decided with our department to take a systems approach to writing curriculum. We did some research and really looked for a framework, and we narrowed it down to what you see there on the right, Understanding by Design by Grant Wiggins and McTae. So, we've been following this framework for revising our curriculum in order to ensure a guaranteed viable curriculum. We, right now, we currently have over 50 teachers who are participating in a series of training. What we've done, Kate Wolf is leading the training, Kate Maxlow, excuse me, and we've broken it into three stages. So, we've already gone through the first two trainings, and we have another crop of teachers that'll be starting in February, going through the same thing. And so, when you think about these success indicators, if most teachers really start, and I did as a teacher, I started with three. I look at my pacing guide, look at standards, and say, "How can I plan a meaningful learning experience?" What I failed to do as a teacher, however, is think about, "What do I really want my students to know, understand, and to be able to do as I approach this planning?" And so, it's been a bit of a rethink for our teachers, but a lot of light bulbs going off. And so, we're starting with, what is it we want kids to know, understand, be able to do? These essential learning outcomes, these student success indicators. And then, second stage is, how do we know they're successful? How do they know...how do we know, as teachers, they've been able to demonstrate understandings of that? And then, we get to, okay, let's plan the meaningful learning experiences. So, that's where we're headed with the curriculum to support it. Now, you see here, this is one page of about 150-page document. This is the curriculum framework document. It says there...down there at the bottom, "English Standards of Learning Curriculum Framework Document, 2010, the last time they were revised." This is for grades K through Fives. As I mentioned, this continues to grow over the years, and what we've said is, let's be honest, not everything is essential. Everything can't be essential. We just don't have enough time. This is a quote, and you've heard the name Marzano before, maybe not Kendall. When the standards movement took place in the mid-'90s, really throughout the country, these two researchers reviewed 160 national and state-level standard documents in a variety of subject areas. They synthesized the material to avoid duplication, and then identified 255 content standards and about 4,000 discrete benchmarks. And basically, what they said, when you look at what kids are supposed to know, understand, and able to do, it would take an additional 15,500 hours of schooling, or about nine years to make it happen. And one of the things we've also seen in this air of accountability is there are some critical skills here that you see in our portrait of a graduate. For example, when you talk to employers, they talk about communication skills. Unfortunately, what happens is, that's a hard skill to test at the state level, and teachers will admit in focus group sessions that we don't pay as much attention to oral language, for example, because it's not on the SOL test. So, some of what you'll see in these standards, we...maybe, and the success indicator in our booklet, there's a communication skill that you won't find in the State Department information with math, but we felt it was important to include in there. So, you'll see some connections there as well. The other piece there is that teachers are asking, and in our...in our conversations with teachers in our studies, we've come across the phrase "content coverage." So, something else we're encountering is when we give teachers a pacing guide, that some, particularly novice teachers, feel the need to do this content coverage, where they're so focused on plotting through the content that we lose sight of, again, stage one, what really do we want students to know, understand, and able to do? So, what are those desired results? And so, again, these success indicators that we're...that we're identifying in Hampton speak to that, and so it'll help provide some clarity to teachers. Some of you have heard this name before, I'm sure, from UVA, Carol Ann Tomlinson, a quote from a recent research article on essential learning outcomes, and she says, "Absent clarity on the essential knowledge, understanding, and the skills for a unit or lesson, the curriculum wanders. But with clarity about what students really need to know, understand, and be able to do those most important things, the teacher is able to focus curricular decisions squarely on what matters most for student success." This here, in the board, Dr. Woods and her team have presented this to the board, our portrait of a graduate. I think this is a great example of kind of narrowing the focus. So, you look at everything a kid can be exposed to in the way we ask of students, but when we look at, really, when students walk across that graduation stage, and you look at some of these essential skills, these are pretty powerful. John Eagle and I, and I think Mr. Kilgore, I don't know if this was a new word for you or not, Mr. Kilgore, when we attended that technology training in Henrico, I had never heard the word before "googable." And the presenter talked about, you know, when we talk to employers, what they're looking for is not necessarily something you can Google. It's what you see right here. It's the five Cs. It's being a critical thinker. It's being able to communicate. It's collaboration, citizenship. It's these skills you see here. And so, in a way, what we're saying with what you have in your booklet is, we believe these skills will set kids up for success. These knowledge items will set kids up for success for the next grade level. So, summary here, before a couple of curriculum leaders come forward, why do we create these portraits of pre-K students in Hampton? We talked a little bit about how it's going to help provide some clarity to staff from a planning purpose and where they're headed, clear expectations, families and students. We've actually included pre-K, and so, pre-K teachers at Moton and throughout our division, what they got together and said, "You know what? When students leave us, what do...what does readiness look like for a kindergartner in Hampton City Schools?" So, the first list you'll come across is what was...a list was created by our folks at Moton. And if...even if I don't attend preschool in Hampton, when I go to register my kindergartner, I'm going to get this information, and early in the spring, and I'll have an idea of what kind of Hampton expects if you're set up for success prior to entering kindergarten. This is what a readiness checklist would look like. So, we started all the way back in pre-K. I've already talked about kind of making meaningful connections to the five Cs. We're going to continue to refine them to do that, but you'll see some of those in there. And then, ensure that vertical articulation and growth of goal success indicators so that students are prepared for the next grade level. So, in that booklet, you can put a first-grade student, for example, English here, math here, and this is what we're saying, when you leave first grade at a minimum, this will set you up if you're able to...if you have this knowledge, understanding, can demonstrate these skills for second grade. So, you'll see some...some natural growth there as we move up through 8th grade. And then, what we did was really looked at the portrait of the graduate, the curriculum leaders, and said, "If this is where we want our kids, our students, when they walk across the stage to be, then what are implications for lower grades, and how do we help them to get to that?" So, we obviously made some connections to that portrait of a graduate. And as far as crafting what you have in front of you, we also took into account feedback from staff. Teachers provided input. We did look at the curriculum frameworks from the state, what their expectations were. I looked at reporting categories, and then, again, as I shared earlier, referencing the portrait of a graduate. At this time, Debbie Feringer, Curriculum Leader for Language Arts, is going to share some of that information with you, and through the language arts lens.
Good evening. In grades K through 12, our goal is to actually have our students be fluent readers, comprehend text, write effectively, and communicate successfully. In doing this, we also want to give them strategies that will also make them effective communicators and contributors, critical and creative thinkers, and global citizens. In your book...oh, I'm sorry. There you go. Sorry about that. In your book, you all have K-8?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. You have an example of K-8 in all of them, but right here, we're showing you a sample of the first grade. And what we did is pulled out four main categories of oral language, phonological and phonemic awareness, literacy and writing, and research. And what we've done is given you two examples under each category. These would be the goals that we would want a student to have at the end of the first grade year. There are additional ones in your book. This is just a sample for you all to see. Of note with that, when you look at some of the middle school grades, grades 6 through 8, you will see that they look very common, but what needs to be understood is that as the students go up in the grade level, it becomes less identifying of a skill and more analyzing the part of it. An example I can give you is for figurative language. You'll see it in grades 6, 7, and 8. In grade 6, the main components of figurative language that they study are simile, metaphor, and hyperbole, but when you get to grade 8, it's simile, metaphor, hyperbole, personification, and symbols. So, there is a growth there also in the parts that we have.
If I could just point out, in terms of the booklet that the members of the board that you have, because I think it's an excellent resource. Thank you, Dr. Cagiano. If you look on pages 21, I think, through 35, as Ms. Feringer just mentioned, although we just have, as she mentioned, grade 1 as an example, but as board members, you have on pages 21 through 35, an outline of the portrait of a first-grade student in terms of language arts, as well as moving through in terms of second grade and so forth, and third grade. So, she just really highlighted for you one area or grade level, and that was grade 1. But I want to share with you that the resource that you have, you have grades K through 8.
Eight. Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Smith. It would have been too much for many slides.
That's okay. No, thank...well, thank you for pointing it out, so.
Good evening. For mathematics, we're certainly excited, because the last time we came before you, we came with excitement about the increase in SOL scores for mathematics. So, when we look at math, we certainly see that we're moving in the right direction. When we think about mathematics, we want to empower all of our students to become mathematical problem solvers. So, we start with our process standards. And when we look at our process standards, these are our HCS, Mathematics Instructional Goals. It's not just solving a math problem. It is making sure that students become, again, mathematical problem solvers. They can communicate their mathematics. They can represent their mathematics. They make those connections in mathematics, and also that they can represent and model their mathematics. Actually, we have three areas of focus for math, and we have mentioned this before, and our three areas of focus is making sure that students understand the problem-solving process and can implement...implement that with fidelity. Also, making sure we differentiate our instruction, as well as build that conceptual understanding. Making sure students understand why. It's not, again, just the algorithm. It's not just, "Here's how I use a cutesy trick to solve this problem." But what does it actually mean? So, when we look at grade 1, and as Dr. Smith indicated, this is just first grade, and we just...there are certainly more than two bullets for each one of these reporting categories. This is what we call our reporting categories. And for grades K through 8, there are five. And the five reporting categories are number and number sense, computation estimation, measurement geometry, probability statistics, and patterns functions in algebra. So, we just highlighted two of these for grade 1. And when we look at grade 1, in grade 1, we want students to be fluent in understanding number sense and being able to distinguish the difference between halves and fourths. In computation and estimation, we want them to be back...be able to use numbers and use them fluently. It's not just a matter of using a calculator to punch buttons in, but can I understand that 9 times 8 is 72 and not have to use the finger model in order to find out or use the Nine Tables? Measurement and geometry, again, for grade 1, it is being able to tell time to the hour and half hour, as well as volume and measurement. And then, for probability and statistics, you can see some things that we are focusing on as well. And the key word here in probability statistics is being able to communicate. We want them to communicate and be able to actually develop problems in which they are using probability and statistics. Math, again, I'm always excited about math, because I see math in everything we say and do. So, when we...how are we going to communicate this to our families? Number one, we already have our Hampton City School website, so we will use that. Send information... Send information home to parents the first week of school, include it in new teacher and new student registration packets. Back to school night is certainly an excellent way to make sure parents have this information, as well as using our PTA as a support facilitator as well. Okay? Thank you.
In addition to making sure that families understand it, we also want to make sure that the Hampton City staff understands it. So we will also be putting it online on the curriculum instruction and assessment website. We will have scheduled trainings for school administrators and school personnel, and we will embed it within the language arts handbook and the mathematics handbook. Each core has a handbook for mathematics and language arts, and so we have a collection of information in there, so this will also be accessible for teachers with that. I'm having, oh, there we go. So with this being created, we have some implications that this has done for the curriculum instruction and assessment group that we work with. One of the first things that we have is evaluation of the written curriculum and pacing guides. Currently, we are writing curriculum right now, so these success indicators are being taken into consideration while we're writing this curriculum to make sure that enough time has been set aside for the success indicators, and that it's very spelled out for teachers on what we need to do. In addition, we'll be formulating a formal professional development plan and the communication plan, so everyone is aware of how we're communicating it, and they can get the information. And then the last one is, it impacts the report card. And what we'll do here is gather stakeholders to have an evaluation of the current report card. Does that report card provide parents the information they know, they need to know, that are their students ready for the next grade level? So if you're looking at this list of success indicators, does my child meet those, and does the report card also help to reflect those? So parents get all the information that they need to know how prepared their student is for the next school year.
All right. That does conclude our presentation at this time. We'd be happy to entertain any questions y'all may have.
Any questions then from board members? Ms. Henry?
Well, it's a comment more than anything. I'm very impressed with this. You've caught the superintendent's bug. It's a good thing we have a print shop. But it is very clear, and it's very helpful. If I'm a parent, I get this, I don't need a syllabus from the teacher, I know what the year's going to be like. This is, this is very good. I was very impressed with the way we're going to help teachers learn to focus on the know, understand, and do concepts, and we're not going to use that acronym, but you need to have to, you know, I know it's used for teachers, and that's fine, but we need to always explain to parents what we're talking about, and this is a whole lot simpler to understand than SOLs are. SOLs are, even our own charting of the know, understand, and do things are a whole lot better and more compact and more focused for teachers. I've read SOLs, and you'll have one here, one standard here, and one standard here, and then it goes on for eight pages over here. It's very difficult to cope with, it's annoying, and you think, I've got to do all these things, and maybe you don't have to do all those things there, a lot of them are suggestions. So I think focusing on the curriculum goals is wonderful. And I read this very quickly, and I know there are going to be lots of parents who are going to be excited to see that in language arts, we don't just start out the little ones with Danielean printing, but we are, in fact, going to really go ahead and transition to cursive and have children write cursive in the third grade. That's going to make a lot of old folks very happy who think that, you know, that, yeah, seriously, that to be a literate person, you ought to be able to read and write cursive handwriting. Not that kids will ever do anything but zip around their text screen, but it's, it's part of being an educated individual that you can write something, even if it's just a thank you note that you write, that may be the only thing we ever write in cursive anymore, but you will make the public very happy to do that. It's a, it's a big perception issue. It's like all those people that think we don't think, say the prayer, or we don't have, have the pledge of allegiance in school anymore. Yes, we do. And guess what? We're going to have cursive in school, that's going to make people very excited. So, that's, that probably doesn't help you learn to read, or process, or draw inferences, or anything else, but it makes an impression on people around you. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Henry. And prior to sharing with the parent group, particularly even online, we'll have an opportunity for parents to provide some feedback on that, because there is still some educational jargon in there, and we want to make sure if we need to put anything in parentheses behind that. But it's fairly straightforward, for the most part.
It is.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Yes, I, I just, a beautiful presentation. I really liked the part with the careers and life skills, when it talks about critical thinking. I was wondering, how are our students doing with problem solving as far as word problems?
Ms. Holmes?
I'm glad you asked. Actually, the mathematics department has created a problem solving template. And in that problem solving template, we do not want to give our students 10, or 20, or 50 problems. You take that one problem and you annotate, and I'm sure Debbie is glad to hear the word "annotate." You annotate, you look at the problem, make sure the student understands the problem. So often, we go right to solve the problem. It's not about solving the problem, it's about understanding the problem. So we kind of force the students to go through these process, or this process, first, understanding the problem, and then, after you understand the problem, then you devise your plan. Now, what am I going to do in order to solve this, even if it is using a calculator, making a table, or so forth? After solving, after devising the plan, then you solve the problem. And always, step number four is to go back and check. Does my answer make sense? So we are, we gave that to all of our teachers, we talk about it frequently, and making sure that application-type problems are embedded in everything that we do.
Okay, I love it. Thank you.
Mr. Harper?
Dr. John, ladies, again, an excellent report. I have a concern, though, with the five Cs. Four of those Cs, a lot of our high school students are able to capture, but that one C, that communication, especially the oral communication, written communication, you can hide, but when you have to go before a person and tell them why you need, why they need to hire you for a job, a lot of our students are falling by the wayside. And I guess it has to do with the culture and the way things are done now, with the type of music and the dress, or whatever, but that seems to be something that a lot of kids have a problem with. They do well in the other four categories of C, but that filter, man, just trips them up. So I guess, the earlier we start, and I'm seeing here with first grade input, and as it leads up to the second, third, and so forth, there is emphasis on oral communication, and speaking in front of classes, and things of that nature, and preparing for job interviews, especially our high school kids, because they, some of them ain't got a clue. And they say words like "ain't."
Yes, Dr. Woods and I today participated in the first of a two-day training. We had a number of high school teachers, curriculum leaders, teacher specialists at Terant, on problem-based learning. As you know, we're partnering with Ford, and really having to change, particularly at the high school level, change teaching and learning. And what we talked about today, every group of teachers paired up, or they had the opportunity to create their own problem-based learning example that perhaps they could use in the classroom. And what we talked about is, you know, as the state is shifting, moving away from a focus on multiple choice assessments to more real-world, relevant types of problem solving, that the opportunity now to embed these in our curriculum, we're starting to sprinkle them in, for example, in third grade, every quarter now, instead of taking an SOL test, the first quarter, third graders do a problem-based assessment in social studies, the second quarter, science, third quarter, social studies, fourth quarter, science. But this is exciting, the teachers, when they're hearing now that, you know, the landscape is changing, and the opportunity to do some things differently, and not having to, when that day comes, to rely solely on multiple choice assessments, but it's going to free up some, some opportunities, because we know, and the employers tell us, you know, we watched some videos today, and that was hammered home today, that, you know, if I can Google something, when I get in front of you for an interview, I have to be able to state my case and communicate, or I have to be able to come in front of a board and present a school board report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Cherry?
Thank you. Again, that was a wonderful presentation. I was very impressed that it was clear, which is the first rule of communication. And as Mr. Harper talked about, you had mentioned that oral communication was probably the most difficult to measure, because it's not on tests, but I see, yet, we, as a division, are including it, especially in the portrait of a Hampton graduate, a Hampton student, and all the way to the first grade, where I saw that, in first grade, by the end of first grade, students should be able to speak in full sentences. So, while I think all of that is fantastic in terms of the communication piece, because without it, you're lost, as Mr. Harper was saying. I also think, when we talk about the teachers, making sure that students know what it is they're supposed to know, and understand, and do, I would submit that our teachers also model that behavior, that they too lead by example, especially when you get to that first grade, that they too speak in full sentences so that the students can see that this is an important effort, whether we're talking about communication or math. You had mentioned that you get excited when you talk about math. I get excited when you talk about communication, because sometimes, and I can give you just a really quick story, when I was in college, I was in trouble of failing statistics, which would have been the only class to keep me from graduating. But because Hampton City Schools had trained me so well in language arts, I wrote a two-and-a-half-page essay on what I'd do if I knew the formula, got half credit, and God, I would have seen. So we know that communication is very important across the board. So I'm glad to see that Hampton City Schools has included that in every level that I saw, if I'm not mistaken, to make sure that our students get the benefit of that. But I would submit that our teachers need to be, made sure that they too model that same kind of effort. Oh, and I'm sorry, I do have one question here. On the information that you're going to be sending home to parents, so that they will know what's expected in terms of the portraits in the different grades, will we have tips? Tips for parents? You know, young parents always tell their little ones, "Use your words." Are there other helpful tips that we would be providing parents, so that they can help underscore what it is we're trying to do as a division?
We haven't talked about that yet, but that's a great idea. We have had conversations with Smart Beginnings, and actually partnering with Newport News City Schools, and the three of us, our agencies coming together and looking at kindergarten readiness, and that's been part of the conversation, is to communicate, and what are the PR materials needed. So we're excited about that, where that's heading, with, working closely with Bruce Myers. But I like the idea for us here, as well, in Hampton City Schools.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Thank you. And the communication piece, too, you know, it's a lot easier for us to measure here versus the state. So, Mr. Harper, with the performance-based, problem-based learning and performance-based assessments, if we go back to identifies results in stage one, we're able to build that into the rubric. So upfront, kids know that when I present, this is what the teacher's looking for from the communication strand of my grade.
So I just wanted to say, these are, these are really important skills, because I think one of you said, in regards to math, that you see it in everything, I think that's what he said. And that's true, because they're, not to be facetious, but there's students, you know, in high school that have jobs, and some of them, like, can't even count change without waiting for the machine to tell them how much change. Like, there was one person in my freshman, freshman year, one of my classes couldn't even count a clock that wasn't digital. So, I mean, yeah, these are skills that it's good to really get in early, because they're, yeah, you're going to need them later, even, like, especially with math, with algebra, statistics. Getting that foundation early is really important, and it really, like, sets them up for, you know, high school, and like, the more formal educational setting. So, yeah, definitely. And that's why I liked that you guys kind of put the portrait of a graduate in there, because, like, it kind of just shows, like, it's, you're going to need it later. And, yeah, just that working on it now will definitely help, and then, making sure that, you know, the teachers really, like, think about what they want the kids to know. So, yeah, I thought it was great.
Thank you, Michaela.
And I share the same sentiment of my board members, Dr. C, that I believe Hampton is doing a great job in making sure that our children are prepared. But I definitely want to share this with Debbie. Over the winter break, not the winter break, when we had the snow inclement, I shouldn't use, say that four-letter word, but when we had that four-letter incident, my son said to me, "Daddy, do you know what inference is?" Yes, so, inference.
He's five?
He's six.
Six.
He's six, and he's in the first grade. I knew. I knew. I knew. So I just want to say kudos, and thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yes.
Great, exactly.
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, we'll move to the 2018 budget highlights, and Ms. Scott will come forward and certainly share information regarding the budget planning process.
Do I need to come over there? You got it, John?
And while she's getting ready, Mr. Chairman, if you're okay, I know that the next presentation will also have Mrs. Scott as the leader for business operations. She'll give the financial report while at the podium.
Yes. Okay. You can see we're technically challenged. Good evening, everybody. How are you?
Doing great.
Chairman Samuels, and Vice Chairman Cherry, Dr. Smith, board members. I'm here tonight to talk about the highlights of our FY18 budget, which will be effective July 1st. As you know, this is the time of year that we typically start working on the budget. The governor's budget comes out in December, and really tells us what we're going to have, and from there, we start working on the budget. So, just to talk about where we are at this point, this is the second year of the biennium. The budget is always issued for a two-year period, so it was issued for the 1617 school year and the 1718 school year, December a year ago. The second December of the biennium, the governor makes amendments to the first year of the biennium, and then any changes to the second year, which is what we're getting ready to budget. So there have been some changes to both years. State revenue for Hampton City Schools is up by about a million and a half dollars, and I'll go into a little detail on that in a minute. We did lose funding for the 2% compensation supplement, both in FY17, which was almost a million dollars, and FY18, which is 1.6 million dollars. But for FY18, the governor replaced the 2% compensation supplement with a 1.5% one-time bonus, at a little over a million dollars, which is funding for SOQ positions. And I'll get into that a little bit more when we get to the expenditure pressures. There's also been a significant increase in the Virginia retirement system rate. Again, that's normally funded for the biennium, it stays the same for the two-year period. However, they have sped up the funding, they've been trying over the last few years to get to a fully funded rate, based on the VRS Board's recommended rate. And because it had been cut back during the recession, they wanted to get back to fully funding it, so that we have a healthy pension system. So they advanced that by a year, and instead of waiting until FY19, the beginning of the next biennium, they sped up the rate and went ahead and implemented it for FY18. So as you can see, that's almost a 2% increase for Hampton City Schools, and actually for teachers all over the state. So that's a significant increase, and it does complete the phase-in of the fully funded rate. The local contribution at this point in the budget is level funded, the city is not as far along in its budget process as we are, and so they have not yet given us our local contribution, so we're just assuming level funding at this point. Medicaid revenue is down by about $100,000, and our budgeted March average daily membership for FY18 will be 19,250, which is a reduction of 250 over the current year. So what are some of the expenditure pressures we're facing? Well, as you can see, the list is fairly long. We start by talking about salary increases, and a salary increase is 1.38 million dollars for each percent of raise that we give to full and part-time staff. The 1.5% bonus that I referenced earlier, as I said, we got just over a million dollars in state funding, because they base the funding on the SOQ positions that they fund in the budget. But for us to provide that one- But for us to provide that 1.5% bonus to all of our full and part-time employees would cost us 1.78 million dollars. So, almost $800,000 more than the funding we received from the state. The health insurance increase, this is estimated based on the prior year and on trends over the last several years, at 1.2 million, but it's a bit of a wild card, because our health insurance plan is currently out to bid. And we'll have more information on the proposals that we've received and how that looks over the next few weeks. The VRS increase that I talked about, almost 2%, the cost to us, cost increase to us is 1.85 million over the current year. Staffing costs, which is made up of interpreters, teachers, and IAs based on current year costs and positions that were hired out of contingency, is about $824,000. City costs, which includes increases in risk management, the insurance, the procurement department, which we share with the city, the school resource officers that are provided for the secondary schools, and the rent that we pay for the school administrative center, the Rupert Sargent Center. That's estimated at 318,000 for all of those things. New Horizons, for the services that we jointly share with New Horizons, the estimated cost increase there is 237,000. Contract increases, there are more than just work plumbing and heating and GCA, but those are the two primary drivers of that figure. Virginia Local Disability Plan, as you know, VRS instituted a, what we call Plan 3, it's the hybrid plan, VRS Hybrid Plan. And in that plan, we are required to pay disability for the employees in that plan. So each year, we evaluate the number of new employees that have been hired, and we increase the budget for the disability accordingly. So that's 30,000. Legal expenses, that's just based on our current expense trend, 25,000. Virginia Public School Authority, which is the bond funding we receive from the state for technology, and based on the base funding plus the e-Backpack funding that we receive, we need to increase that by 23,000 to meet the local match requirement. And then the Academies partnership, the payments to Ford NGL, because we are moving along a little faster than we had thought on that track, the payments to Ford NGL will be escalated, so we need to increase what we have budgeted for that just a little bit. So what do we have in the way of savings? Year-over-year attrition, which just means the cost for the people that we budgeted in FY17 versus the cost for the people that we're budgeting in FY18. So we pull down salaries and benefits each year and look at who we actually have employed and their total salary and benefits. So the savings there is just over a million dollars. Copier savings, we're looking at consolidating a number of copier contracts, and so the savings estimate on that is about 17,000. And then the per pupil allocations, based on the lower enrollment, is about 30,000. So that leaves us with our current deficit, which does include the 1.5% bonus, but does not include any increase to base compensation. And with that, the deficit is currently just under $4 million. Any bonus or compensation increase in terms of the General Assembly, whether they make any changes to that line item or not, we're just awaiting action from the General Assembly. But right now, we're going with the fact that they've funded that 1.5% bonus. So where are we with the General Assembly? Their session started last Wednesday, the 11th. Ann Bane has been burning up the road, going back and forth to Richmond and keeping us on top of what's going on there, and she's great at sending information for us to review and analyze. Budget Sunday, the crossover is February 5th, and because it's the second year of the biennium, it's a short session, so it ends February the 25th. So what are the next steps at this point? Well, obviously, establishing the priorities of the school board, which we've had some preliminary conversation and sent a survey out for you guys to look at. We are working as a budget committee on the FY18 budget proposal. We are tying this to the strategic plan we developed last year, some guiding questions for stakeholders to look at, to help them, you know, with any changes they make to their budget, especially if they're looking at increases, how that actually ties back to the strategic plan and how they measure it, and, you know, several things for them to consider as they put their budgets together. We'll be holding two-by-two meetings with board members in late February, buddy meetings with city council in early March. We will present the proposed budgets for all of our other funds, other than our operating fund, on March 1st, Wednesday, March 1st. We have five Wednesdays this year. We'll be presenting the operating budget for Fund 50 on March the 8th. And of course, we are at this point awaiting, you know, final action from the General Assembly. And whether we get that, you know, quickly enough to incorporate into the March 8th presentation, just depends on how quickly DOE gets the template out to us. And with that, are there any questions?
Are there any questions for Ms. Scott? I guess you did such a fantastic job, Ms. Scott. Board members do not have any questions, but I'm glad that you were able to explain that bonus of one point, 5% increase, and how it's geared towards SOQ and the other benefits for individual staff members who aren't SOQ. So thank you for providing us with that information.
Absolutely. And I think I'm next, too, so I'll just stay. All right, we'll roll into the monthly financial report. As of, I've got to put my glasses on for this one. The report as of November 30th, we have revenues totaling 71,527,200, and expenditures and encumbrances totaling 82,409,552, which, of course, as I explain every month, the expenditures and encumbrance do include items that get encumbered on an annual needs basis and get spent down during the year, which is why that number typically is higher than the revenue number and closes the gap as we move through the year. This is on target and a little bit below where we have been in the prior year, based on the budgeted ADM of 19,500 pupils. As previously reported, the fall membership report showed student enrollment of 19,616 students, which, using trending from prior years, indicates that we will have a March 2017 ADM of 19,441 students, or 59 fewer than what we've budgeted. The decreased enrollment will result in a revenue loss of about 321,000. And as I indicated, we've also been notified by the Department of Education that we will not receive the nearly $1 million in compensation supplement funding due to shortfalls in state revenue. But we have taken, as a division, proactive steps to mitigate that shortfall, so we should be in good shape in terms of that. Also included in the report, as usual, is the monthly status of budget transfers to or from Category 9. And if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions or remarks from board members? Well, once again, okay, Ms. Mugler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just, you know, it seems like every year, we are somehow missing the mark by like 40 students, 50 students with our ADM. Are we looking at past trends and connecting our start numbers with that?
Oh, absolutely. We update it every year. We use the Weldon Cooper model. And keep in mind, 40 students out of 20,000, you know, is a very small percentage. So it actually is a pretty good prediction based on the model that we're using. But yes, we do update it every year. We update the fall membership. We redo the trending. We look at not only what Weldon Cooper is providing, but we look at our own history, and we use an average, a three-year average of March ADM compared to fall membership to actually predict the March ADM once we get the fall membership. So we start with an initial number based on trending and the Weldon Cooper, and then we look at it again when we get the fall membership number in terms of the March ADM.
And how it measures up.
And actually, if you look over time, some years were a little up, some years were a little down from what we've predicted. But typically, we're fairly close in terms of, you know, percentage accuracy. So, we'd love to be on the mark.
I know. It just seems like, I don't know, maybe we want to just go ahead and deduct 40 from the actual number we're landing on, because that seems to be where we end up.
Yeah.
At the end, you know, because 312,000 is, 321,000 is kind of a...
Yeah.
It's a big number.
It is. I agree.
Any other?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Mugler. Any other comments from board members? One quick question, and you may not be able to answer this at this time. Whenever a student leaves the division, do we have a survey for that parent or guardian as to the reason why he or she is leaving the division, if we are aware that they're leaving?
I'm going to look at the instructional person. I personally don't know that, but...
Okay.
John, do you know?
And that's the reason why I said you may not have to answer, but...
We can get back with you, and I would suspect that we may not have such a measurement in terms of each school, I think, would probably approach it in a very different way, in terms of collecting that particular...
Yeah. Each school handles the withdrawal for students at their school, so, but we can check on it and find out.
Great. Any other questions?
I do know within the system, the coding, we can identify why in general terms, and I think we can share that information with the board in terms of the process, because I know the state, they provide us with certain codes in terms of when students withdraw. So we can share that. That may give a bit more information.
Yes.
We also have codes for reentry students.
Exactly.
True, because sometime, we get, we lose students and we gain students. So it goes both ways, yeah.
Because the reason I'm thinking that, that will be a great tool for us to gauge, you know, student leaving and coming, as to the question that Ms. Mugler had pertaining to, you know, when we have a difference of 40 students or an increase of 20 or so forth. So we can, yeah, I think that would be a great tool and data for us to use.
Okay. Yeah, we'll look into that.
Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Scott.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes superintendent and staff reports. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Smith. Next item agenda is Item 5, hearing of any delegation or presentation of any written communications and/or petition. Ms. Bowers, could you please read the protocols?
Yes.
And if we have any individuals who would like to speak before the board?
You have one that...
I have one. Okay.
Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forms are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk. Adult speakers shall identify themselves by full name and address. Minors shall provide their full name and, if applicable, their grade and school of attendance. Each individual will have five minutes to speak. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues. Speakers shall not address matters involving individual students, as these topics may violate confidentiality and are not appropriate in a public forum. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Great. And tonight, we have a speaker, Ms. Teresa Craig.
First, let me say Happy New Year. I haven't seen you all in a while, and I want to apologize for that. I should have done this a long time ago. First thing is, I want to tell you, thank you so much for bringing the heart back to transportation, Mr. Darren Wills. Thank you for listening to us on those... Second is, thank you very much for the Mary P. Cloud. We do enjoy it being paved, and for bathrooms out there. So we do have to thank you for all that. Now, for the other stuff. Of course, you know, we do need money. Our insurance has gone up, and the health has gone down. We do have a good force now, as, like I've told you before, if you get a radio from the dispatchers to the mechanics to, I mean, everybody's working as a team. It's not individual departments. Everybody is working as a team. Dispatchers, I know they have to pull their hair out every day. They have to cover runs at the last minute, but then you have the drivers that were willing to cover the runs at the last minute. Next, I would like to talk about the attendance. I've been able to use the Wellness Center, and it's helped out a lot. It's helped out a lot of drivers with medications and everything else, because it's not as bad as going to a regular pharmacy. It was bought my attention, and a lot of the attendants have kind of asked me if I would speak and let you know some of their output on it. They're not offered any type of insurance with the city that they can go through the Wellness Center. We have a lot of older people that's attendance on our buses. The Wellness Center would really, really help them out a lot with medications and everything else. They should at least be offered a supplemental plan or something through the city where they can be offered to get the same benefits that we get offered. They're out there working every day, just as we are. So I did want to take the time to mention that the aides do need, you know, to be able to go to the Wellness Center and get their medications like we do. If there's anything that you all can help them with doing that, it would be greatly appreciated. And as I said, transportation does still need money. We still need money, and I know everybody else does do. So I just want to tell you thank you, again, for everything that you all have done and for listening to everything we have said, and have a great year. See you at short this time.
Thank you, Ms. Craig. At this time, we have Item 6, deliberations. These were presented to us before by Dr. Cajayana, so I just wanted just to have an opportunity for board members to make any comments, if they have any questions for Dr. Cajayana before these items are moved to action. And these items are Revision of School Board Policy, IGAH, Family Life Education, Revision of School Board Policy, LC, Charter Schools, Revision of School Board Policy, LA, Relation to Educational Accreditation Agencies, Revision of School Board Policy, IGAI, Character Education, Review of School Board Policy, KGA, Sales on School Property, and Revision of School Board Policy, IGBG, Homebound Instructions. Are there any comments, remarks, or questions from board members? Mr. Harper?
I only have one, 6.02, and Ms. Reeves kind of cleared that up for me. If we don't have any charter schools in our school district, why don't we need a policy? But I'm square on that now.
Yeah, square.
I didn't want to get, you know, some people may get the impression that if we have a policy, then we must somewhere have a charter school, but we just don't.
Okay.
I'm good.
And could Ms. Reeves, would you be able to provide some, just a snippet of information?
My conversation?
Yes.
Mr. Harper? I explained to Mr. Harper that the reason that we have the charter schools policy is because in every school division, every jurisdiction in Virginia, any entity has, or individual, in fact, has the opportunity to apply for a charter school within our jurisdiction to the board. So we have to have a policy and a procedure by which they do that.
All right. Well, thank you so much for that explanation. No further comments or remarks? Dr. Cajayana, I believe that you did such a dynamic explanation and relaying that information to us at the last meeting, so thank you so much. So... So therefore, these deliberation items will be moved to action item at our next board meeting. The next item is Item 7, and these items are for action, which will require approval from board, and it is Item 7.01, Revision of School Board Policy, IKFA Locally Awarded Verified Credits. Item 7.02, Revision of School Board Policy, IEBA Acceleration. 7.03, Revision of School Board Policy, IHB Class Size and Teacher Assignments. Item 7.04, Revision of School Board Policy, IA Instructional Goals and Objectives. Item 7.05, Revision of School Board Policy, IIAA Textbook Selection and Adopting. Item 7.06, Revision of School Board Policy, IKF Standards of Learning Tests and Graduation Requirements. Is there a motion for approval?
Mr. Chair, move approval of Action Items 7.01 through 7.06.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Ms. Mugler to approve Action Items 7.01 through 7.06. Ms. Bowers, could you call for the vote?
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is Item 8, Deliberation First Read. And who's up next to the podium? And that is Dr. Cooper. The other, Dr. C. And Dr. C., you will be providing us information in Item 8.01 through 8.05, Revision of School Board Policy, EEB Threat Assessment Team.
I will do the threat assessment team. Not all of these are mine, but let's start with EBB.
Yes.
The changes that you see here are changes that are recommended by the Virginia School Board Association when they most recently published their review. You'll notice that the chief items that are in here is that it expands the policy to include anyone in a school setting, not just students who may be a threat. And it also includes a change in the statute. In the past, we could not obtain a criminal history or certain medical information on individuals. Under the change in the code, threat assessment teams can get that information on a limited basis. And then there's another section that says, if we get such information, it's really for the purposes of assessing a threat and creating a plan for intervention and safety, but that we must not redis disclose that information. And those are the three major changes that you will see.
Are there any remarks or questions from board members? All right, next item is 8.02, Revision of School Board Policy, KBA Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Ms. Diane Galata?
You will see minor changes that are basically based on the recommendation from the SBA as well, and really trying to get this consistent with what we're doing operationally. And that's both of those. The second one is actually the form that people may fill out when requesting a request through FOIA.
Great. And next item, 8.03, Revision of School Board Policy, KBA F1 Request for Public Record.
And that is the form that people, we don't always mandate that they fill out the form, but most of the time, they do request something in writing, and that helps us keep better records of it and follow through and make sure that we're abiding by the law.
Okay. And next item is 8.04, Revision of School Board Policy, EBCB Safety Drills.
It's me again. Thank you. You'll see that these are also changes that are recommended by the Virginia School Boards Association in language, where they change everything to a present tense. And the other changes are based on changes in the statutory requirements for safety drills. And so we have changed our language to match the code, saying when we will do the drills and how many drills we will do.
Okay, great. No comments from board members? Okay, next item is 8.05, Revision of School Board Policy, JAH Suicide Prevention and Intervention.
This is just very minor linguistic change. This was on a review, and we actually simply aligned the language with language that's used in the industry when we're describing students with suicidal ideation or suicidal thought. We just simply removed language that was less aligned. There is no substantive change in the content of this policy.
Thank you so much for providing that information. Next item is Item 9, Information. The next regular meeting will be held on February 1st, 2017, at 6:30 PM at the Jones Magnet Middle School. And the next item is Item 9.02, Information, and I open the floor for the superintendent and board members to share informational items with our general audience.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No further business from the superintendent.
Any remarks or comments from board members? At this time, our meeting is adjourned.